Good evening, everybody. I'm opening up this hearing on the proposed budget for the 2013-14 school year for the Rhinebeck Central School District. And I'm going to turn over the hearing to Superintendent Joe Phelan.
Thank you. This is really a repeat of our last hearing a couple of weeks ago prior to the Board adopting a budget. Nothing has changed since then. Essentially, and if anybody needs a copy of this, we have extra copies, but I think everybody who's here in the audience got one last time around. If you need another, we have them. Essentially, we're looking at the three-part budget. The administrative budget shows an increase of 9.66 percent. The program budget, which is the instructional part of the budget, shows an increase of 3.54 percent. The capital budget shows a slight decrease of 1.72 percent. We've done a lot of reallocating of funds to try to meet the Board's expressed goals to us, which is to develop a budget that maintains, and where possible, improves our programs and services to students, and does so by staying within the New York State tax levy cap limit. And we've managed to do both of those things in putting the budget together. A lot of repurposing of monies that we're using differently this year, as well as an increase in funding to the tune of 3.46 percent total budget increase over last year's budget, as reflected in the 13-14 proposed budget. That 3.46 percent budget increase will drive a tax levy of 2.96 percent. The state's tax levy limit for Rhinebeck for the coming year is 3.62 percent. So we are 0.66 percent below, yeah, below the state's tax levy limit for the coming school year. In terms of programs and services, the proposed 2013-14 budget provides for a number of services that we anticipate needing for the coming year, which includes an elementary teacher to maintain class sizes at around 20, some of them slightly less, some of them slightly more, depending on what our final enrollment's going to be. Additional teaching time because of the uncertainty of student performance across the state on this year's ELA and math assessments, and the uncertainty as to how student performance on these new assessments based on the Common Core, which has only been partially implemented across the state as well as in our district. It's uncertain as to what kind of numbers those test results are going to drive in terms of requiring our students to have AIS services. So to be on the safe side, to budget conservatively, we plan for one AIS teacher at the high school. We have done some planning of small pieces of teaching time to meet needs at advanced level Spanish, introducing a pre-engineering program into our high school, which to date, even though we've been making parents and students aware of the offering, we already have approximately 21 students signed up for the pre-engineering program in grades 10 through 12. So again, they all probably won't be able to get it once the schedule starts to, you know, push up some kids out of some choices and into others. But starting with an initial enrollment of 21 for a course that we have not even offered yet, it's a pretty robust request, a number of requests at this point in time. Social science elective is something that Dr. Davenport has been lobbying for for many, many years, and I believe the signups for a potential psychology course are also not quite up to 21, but like 16, 17 students have expressed an interest in that course. We've planned for the possibility of offering a computer science elective. At the very least, we can get one off the ground this year. But we're also in filling a new math position. We're looking for a candidate who has a computer science background as well as a math background. So we'll try to position ourselves for the future in terms of promoting that course of study for students who may be interested. Also, in terms of the administrative side, we're looking to reorganize our technology administration, which right now is done through a part-time, a teacher who was part-time technology coordinator, and by repurposing some monies within our current scheme of managing our technology, we're looking with some additional budget support to be able to pull many of the technology and communications-related tasks under the umbrella of an administrator who would have a title similar to Director of Instructional Technology, to provide the leadership, to take those ideas that were called out in our technology audit. That was conducted earlier this year and really position our school district in terms of technology and electronic communications to move forward. This budget supports that, as well as the position of an assistant principal at our elementary school to assist in one aspect of the position with the implementation of the new APPR, our evaluation, state's evaluation system, as well as to provide support to the teaching and learning practices in the building. And that also provides us with taking some of the quasi-administrative responsibilities away from some AIS teachers in our building to provide more AIS support to the students. So it's actually addressing a number of different needs in the elementary school. Some additional program enhancements that we've built into the budget or made accommodations for through the budget is updating the library automation system in the two libraries in our school district, our elementary school or our middle school, high school, to provide additional support for the booster-sponsored athletic programs in our district. There are four of them currently: lacrosse, boy's swimming, girl's swimming, and crew to provide additional after-school program opportunities for middle school students and to support our advanced placement program by absorbing the fees for the AP exams that we require students who take AP courses to sit for and hopefully do well on, based upon a number of the recognitions that we've received lately, both from The Washington Post and from Newsweek, as well as from the College Board and the AP organization itself, where our AP program, especially for a small high school, is quite robust, well-attended, and our students are quite successful in that program. So we think we're on the right track with advanced-level courses for our high school students, and this budget continues to support that program as well as the others that I've mentioned. In terms of the actual budget vote, will take place a week from this evening. That would be Tuesday, May 21, 2013, in the Bulkeley Middle School cafeteria. Voting starts at 2:00 p.m., ends at 9:00 p.m. And there are two parts of the budget. One is the proposition on the school budget, which authorizes the school district to expend the amount of $30,283,742 and to levy the taxes necessary to raise that amount of money. In addition to the voting on the school budget, we'll be electing, well, voters will be electing three members to the Board of Education, each for a three-year term, which would commence on July 1, 2013, and expire on June 30, 2016. And the four individuals who are running for those three seats are, in the order that their names will appear on the ballot, are Deirdre DiAlbert, Ali Hamud, Lisa Rosenthal, and Laura Schilkend. So that is the Reader's Digest version of the last two and a half to three months' worth of hard work on the part of the Board and our business administrator and our building administrators and other department heads. A long process, but I think a process that we hope has resulted in the budget that the community will be able to support, and that will benefit our kids in the near term and in the long run.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments? Joe, why do we have a public hearing after the Board is required to adopt the budget?
That's a great question. It would be one that only those wiser than I, who live and work in Albany, would be able to answer. I have absolutely no idea. It seems totally counterintuitive that you would have a public hearing several weeks, at least, after a Board of Education has adopted their budget and it's going to go to the public. That is the reason why we have our own local, non-required budget hearing typically on, at the beginning of the meeting, on the night that the Board has to adopt the budget. So people who have been following the budget process have been coming to meetings perhaps, or a budget workshop perhaps, and providing input, formally, informally, however, have one last chance to make their feelings known about the budget before the Board then has to vote. I mean, having input now is wonderful, but it really, the only thing that impacts the course of history in terms of next year's budget will be the vote that happens next Tuesday, not any particular comment that might happen at this Board. I mean, why it's set up that way, again, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but we are required to do it, so we do it.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay. Anyone else? Well, again, thank you for all your hard work and to all of you for putting the time in these past several months. Next Tuesday's the big day for us, so we'll meet again then. All right, well, then I'm closing this hearing, and in about 10 minutes, we'll commence with our regular Board of Education meeting. Thank you. This is a meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It's Tuesday, May 14, 2013. May, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 23, 2013, regular meeting.
So moved.
By Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mark. Changes?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
An excessive in my action. On the first page of the regular meeting notes, the notes have me arriving twice. I'm pretty sure I'll be arriving, and I think it was the first one was the correct one. It's under 1.0 and 4.0.
Oh, yeah.
So I think 4.0 is wrong.
Oh.
Yeah, you had arrived before because you're in the...
Right. Actually, and you know what? I'm going to add, under 5.3, public comment, and I'm sorry, Meg, I didn't, a parent encouraged the district to continue the conversation, New York State testing, a hot topic among parents. There have been anecdotal reports that 70 students opted out. I believe it was in Red Hook, that was the, at Red Hook.
Right.
I didn't catch that. Okay. Any other changes? All those in favor of the minutes amended? That's unanimous. That motion passes. Now, we have an opportunity for public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment, you can raise your hand, and if you'd like to identify yourself, you may, and you can speak into the microphone, which helps with the volume on Panda. And go ahead.
Hi. My name's Judy Schneider. I'm a mother of a sixth grader, and I live here in the village of Rhinebeck. And I wanted to talk to you all today, or just share with you some reflections of a family's experience of the incident on April 30, that most of you are probably quite remembering. It was quite a big day, and I felt it was important because I know that in my own experiences, when there's been like a big incident or a big event or anything, I always like to reevaluate, assess how things went, and what kinds of things you might be able to do to fine-tune, excuse me, and address, readdress some of the actions that were taken. In no way am I angry, or, you know, this is not, I'm not coming here to criticize. I'm only here to share some experiences that happened to me, and some experiences that happened to my son, and give that to you all as a perspective. So on that afternoon, it was about a little after 2:00. I was at work, and I realized my son was walking over to another family's house, normally wants home. And I realized that I had expected a phone call that I had gotten, so I checked my phone messages at home. Never check my phone messages at home, because I have my cellphone, I have a work phone. But I happened to do it on this day, and I get the message. Several boys, or, I'm sorry, several students fight law enforcement, and my mind takes off from there. I know probably not a bomb threat, because otherwise it wouldn't be a delayed, or, I'm sorry, an early closing, it would be an evacuation. So obviously, not that. It's a fight. A book that I recommend is Fistic, Knife, Gun, and it talks about the history of fights, and, by Jeffrey Canada. And an assumption is very easily made that it probably involves guns. So that's just what's going on in my mind. I don't know anything. I immediately get concerned about my son and where he is and wanting to get to him. I'll stop there with that experience, because unfortunately, if I hadn't have checked, or fortunately, I checked my messages, if I hadn't, I wouldn't have learned until maybe 5:00 or 6:00 that night that there was an incident. May have, because maybe I would have probably tried to find him, although it turns out that the house he was going to, the phone calls weren't working, it wasn't going through. So it would have been quite a while before I would have found out that if anything had gone wrong. So what I'd like to suggest is that maybe, I know that all my phone numbers are in my email are in the directory. I know that obviously you have to do a quick turnaround of reaching out to numbers. I'd like to suggest that you include all numbers of families, not just maybe the home phone, which is the one you reached out to me. I'd also like to recommend using texts. I have used texts in previous, my previous profession, where we use texts for school closings and school delays. It works beautifully. And for people that text, a lot of us do now, I would like to suggest that. So I would like to suggest that maybe you have a bunch of phones in your system that it just gets sent out to, and that hopefully maybe a text response, hopefully you never have to use it again, but that would be my first recommendation. So, okay, back to my son. I'm a little bit scared here. I finally do, I call somebody, I find out that there's a lot of police all around. It's kind of scary. She's at the school, and I'm like, oh geez, my son is walking. I'm pretty scared. So I follow up, I try to call where he's supposed to be. I did call the school, I found somebody, they said, oh, she checked, it should be safe for him to walk. I called where he's supposed to go, he's not there. Other kids got there, he didn't. I called home. By this time, he should have been home, he was not home. He was nowhere I could find. I tried to call the school again, no answer. By this time, I'm scared, I'm flying down the road. Okay. I call 911, I call the Sheriff's Department, we're in conversation, and a parent desperate my son home. They're all, she apparently, he was telling me, in fact, I heard from several boys, that it was a lot of excitement. I think it was police, from what I hear, with bulletproof vests, a lot of excitement, pretty scary. They, my son Jesse told me that he felt very safe here at school, because there were so many police. He also told me that when he left the school, walking, he felt very safe, because I believe he was kind of escorted, there were like police all around, until he got to the end of the school property. This is my next concern. Most of the children in this school district are escorted from the school to their homes or to their nearby homes on the bus. They are taken away from the situation. There are a group of children who walk in the village. Generally, that's fine, but when there are guns that were probably, possibly, potentially involved, that do not know school boundaries, as we know with revenge and as we know with fighting, and again, these are just all assumptions, I don't know the exact story, but I know that there are no school limits. And therefore, my son got escorted, the person that they were trying to apprehend could have found this person that he was trying to seek revenge on down at the mini park. My son might have been in the way, could have been in town. Now, I do understand that there were police periodically, interspersed, but not everywhere. So anywhere my son, he was basically told, you know, let off to walk alone. He was scared. As soon as he left the police, he was feeling, he said it was very stressful, and he was scared, and he knows that he joined up with several other kids, and he knows that they were scared too. So that leads to my next suggestion. If an incident ever occurs like this, and if it's just a regular fight, or if it's a stick fight, even a knife fight, I'm not as concerned, but if there are guns involved, if it's as serious as this was, please don't let the children walk home. First, as a parent, I was scared. I was scared. Second of all, an 11-year-old, knowing that there's guns, knowing some of the people involved, scared, all the rumors flying, so that even what he thought he knew, he thought there were all kinds of things. I mean, some of the rumors were, you know, that everybody was going to be shot. I mean, the rumors were flying at that time. He was scared, as an 11-year-old, to be out in the village alone. So I would like to recommend that you either maybe find a way to keep them here in school. I know that some of the students whose families are here, teaching or whatever, were kept in the building. Maybe you can keep them in the building, maybe you can work it out so that you can talk by phone with the parent to say, okay, so-and-so can take my child home, but please don't let them alone at 11 years old, knowing that a gun would be coming around the corner at any moment. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Great. Judy, thank you so much for coming and sharing with us your comments. And I think I'll just take this opportunity to say, and Joe, maybe you want to just, you know, they're, you know, we will, as a board, discuss this as well, but that the administration met with state and local police yesterday to review that incident and the response to it.
Yeah. And I appreciate your comments, because we'll put that in with all the debriefing that we've already done and will continue to do. The one thing I would like to mention, not only to address one of your, the concerns that you raised, but also for anybody else who might see this on Panda or YouTube or whatever, we do have, and we used that day, an emergency alert system. It involves telephone, it involves text, it involves email. We populate, when we set this up a number of years ago, we populated it with all of the information that people had on file with us digitally. And when we publicized it to the community, we made people aware of the fact that they could add additional phone numbers, cell phones, grandma's house, I mean, and we can put multiple phone numbers on there, text message sources, email addresses, so there, I just want to make sure you know that that is available to you. If the message went to a number that is not convenient for you to get, to get it, in this particular case, all you have to do is either call the district office and talk to Mr. Brunel, or call your child's building principal and request that cellphone number such-and-such be added to that call, and henceforth, until you change it, whenever there's an emergency alert, whether it's for a situation like occurred on the 30th, or whether it's to get information out about a bus strike or whatever, anytime we send out that kind of emergency message, your cellphone or whatever you put in there will be contacted in the way that you want it to be contacted. Call, text, in the case of email, an email, all, three of those modes, if you wish, and I'm not being ridiculous about that, because some parents have multiple places to be contacted in the event of an emergency. So we have the capability, we just need to know if you're not getting that information at the place that's convenient for you, let us know, and we can take care of that in a couple keystrokes. That is the easiest of the things that you brought up for us to address for a variety of emergency situations, and even situations that are important to have the information, but may not be in everybody's definition of an emergency. But if we feel we have to get information out to parents, we will use that emergency system, and it goes to whatever you already have in our system or would like to put in the system. It's really easy to get that in there. So just let us know, and anybody else who is listening to this, call your building principal, call the district office, we can make that change literally in seconds. So I just want to let you know that's available to you for the future, should you need that.
Thank you. I have a lot of respect for Rhinebeck schools, I'm really glad my son is here.
We are too. Thank you, Judy. We appreciate feedback.
Thank you very much, Judy. Any other members of the public have any comments? Okay, great. Thank you. We'll move on then to our reports and discussion. We have Board Committee reports, including first communication. Yeah, a couple more months of, and, here.
The first one I'll read is April 22nd. It was the day before our last board meeting. We discussed the website survey just briefly. We had 58 submitted, and then Diane and I were going to correlate the surveys and report back at our May 6 meeting, which I will be reporting on as well. We brought up last meeting regarding the YouTube AV Club. That's been up. I viewed it, it looks good. I'm really impressed by the AV Club getting us going on that. I also looked on the site, looks like the Village Board is up on YouTube and maybe the Town Board. I know definitely Village.
It looked like both were actually.
Yeah, so that's, you know, good for us to get with the times. You know, we briefly looked at the budget newsletter, which obviously is old business, because here it is, all nicely done. New things for communications, we talked about having a community... New things for communications, we talked about having a community open house. More interested in having it for fall of 2013 and spring of 2014. For the community and the school board, having one in the morning, maybe the fall, having a coffee and light snack, and in the evening and the spring, coffee and dessert to accommodate people's work schedules. Just to get, you know, be really productive for new board members and just engaging the community. We also discussed the guidance office, how it would be nice to investigate how scholarships can be downloaded instead of getting hard copies from the office. And the graduation banners will be placed in the village pending village approval tonight at their meeting, fingers crossed. So then on to May 6 meeting. So we basically spent our time talking about the 58 surveys that were submitted regarding our website. All grades were represented and all three schools were represented well. The district, the majority uses our district website weekly. And you can see the use of the website was pretty, you know, from district news, teacher page, work, homework, calendar, sports, schedules, parent portal, all the choices were well represented on the survey as well. Ability to find information, quite a few say yes, a few said no, with many comments regarding teacher pages, difficult to find information if it's not updated regularly. Board of Education information can be difficult to find. Minutes was mentioned, however, later in the survey it did say it was improved because in the past, we have been delayed in putting our minutes up on our website. I think we've gotten a little bit better on that. But they had talked about links from presentations and budget information is lacking, and too many places to click for Board of Ed information. Guidance Office pages was disorganized, and again, the calendar, difficult to find information. Pretty much it was equal, you know, updated information, yes, no, fairly similar. Again, mainly the teacher pages, updating their website for homework assignments and due dates, and the Board of Ed and the calendar was also, again, commented on. So the gist of the survey that we found was that two main areas that really needed to be improved were our teacher website pages and the school calendar. I think that's what mainly the parents are using. They're seeing what their kids are doing every day and what they need to be doing at home, and their future, you know, their school calendar, you know, what's coming in the future. Consistency was the main theme for both areas, and that the Board of Education, the guidance office could also use some improvements. We discussed how important the Director of Technology will be to the Communications Committee next year, and using this survey to help address some of these situations. It was also brought up about the mains, having a main school calendar instead of so many different school calendars, where you can go to one calendar to have activities for all three schools, sports, you know, whatnot. And another thing that was talked about for the future, which was a good idea, is having a set of questions for Board of Ed candidates listed on our webpage. So like who's running next year, you'll see maybe a picture so they can get a face and a name, and, you know, their answers to a set number of questions.
Thank you.
So I can see, you know, in the, in the future communications, it was kind of a committee that, you know, we did a lot one year, and then it kind of slows down, and I can see it kind of becoming more robust, especially with the, you know, the technology director.
Any questions or comments for communications? Well, I, I appreciate that you guys did that survey, and I think the, an idea to have one school calendar, or even under calendars, like, you know, the several calendars that are available as one link, so at least when you look under calendar, you can access the multiple calendars more easily. I think that that was a good idea. And I actually, the idea of us taking some initiative on questions for Board of Ed candidates, I think would be a nice way to communicate, help, you know, use our resources to just communicate to the public. So I appreciate that. And actually, I would just make one other recommendation, perhaps the Communications Committee might want to consider in light of the comment from, from our parent, you know, if, if there needs to be any additional publicity about, from the, from the building principals or through the website to update any information you might have for emergency contact information. I don't know how widespread that problem is, or people don't realize that, like me, I can get a text, an email, and a phone call, all. So maybe just communicating that again.
That's a good idea, sure.
Like, just know, you can do this in multiple ways.
Yeah, over the past couple of weeks with that incident and the bus strike.
Yeah, it's the bus strike.
I've gotten upwards of about 20 changes and things of that nature, people calling up or emailing me, you know, with adding additional contacts, especially cell phones, because, you know, the school messenger cannot go through a switchboard. It can't go to an extension. It can only go to a physical number. So a lot of people, well, then my cellphone is a secondary one, which is probably like...
Work number may be problematic.
Work number, work email addresses.
Right. Okay, great. Oh, Paul.
I just wanted to thank the Communications Committee for doing the survey. I think it's great data, points out problem areas, and, you know, I hope that, you know, you don't lose sight of the survey going into next year, and you use that survey data to kind of guide the committees some of their work next year.
I was just going to add something, just to address that there were definitely some
tech savvy parents that did this survey that are, I'm going to refer to the Director of Technology to address those comments.
Right.
They were good.
Using terminology I have no idea.
Yeah, terminology that was way over my head.
All right. Thank you, Karen. We'll move on now to Personnel Committee minutes.
This is our May 3 meeting. We had set up an informal meeting with the RTA team to kind of agree the goal of the negotiation process, which actually happened this week. We looked over the finalization of our draft hiring criteria, which we've enacted, and we're looking to add that into the hiring policy now, so that's going to go into the Policy Committee, which it already has actually. We talked a little bit about interest-based bargaining, and for next time, we're going to, we'll get long-term substitutes.
Thank you. So people can see in their packet a copy of the, a draft of hiring criteria that our committee developed, and then Joe took that document and then embedded it into Policy 9240, which is on recruiting and hiring. I thought very nicely and then brought it to the Policy Committee for discussion so that we could consider actually putting it into policy. So I know the Policy Committee has met, we don't have minutes from that meeting, so we'll just wait till the next time they report out on that. But does anyone have any questions on that? Or anything else in the minutes?
I would almost reiterate my, you know, thanks to the committee for putting this together, just going to respond to the issues that were brought up for the last year and a half. And I like, it's very comprehensive and fair. And I would encourage you to extend it to the long-term substitute hiring as well because we are still, I would assume, or maybe you can continue the discussion of how the practice of long-term substitutes going automatically into the interview pile for tenor teacher positions would play into this factor. Same criteria doesn't apply to a long-term substitute, but they would have an idea looked at more favorably for an interview than sort of two different criteria.
Right. Yeah. Well, I appreciate that comment, and we definitely will be discussing long-term subs because it's, you know, in a very, very brief conversation, they come to us in different ways, under different circumstances, under like all of a sudden circumstances, or someone subbing for a little while, and then they need to be here for longer. So, so we need to consider the multiple circumstances in which we need long-term subs, and how a hiring process fits into what sometimes needs to be immediate filling of a position. So, but that's appreciated as well. All right. But we'll expect that policy to come from the Policy Committee at some point, in some form, for us to have an additional discussion on, first reading it. Go ahead.
Do you want to just say, should we just say a word now about the first item?
Sure. Yeah, 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 okay.
So the policy, the Personnel Committee, per item one here, did in fact meet with the negotiating team for the RTA yesterday.
Yep.
That was a very nice informal meeting yesterday afternoon after work, where we talked about the negotiating process that we had just been through. And, you know, we kind of shared what our perspectives were, and kicked around some ideas for, you know, what we might do in the future. My personal takeaway, it was a very productive discussion, very collaborative discussion. You know, I think it lays the groundwork for, you know, a strong relationship with the RTA leadership team, and particularly the negotiating team next year. So we had that meeting, and everybody kind of went away, I think, thinking about it. So I expect, you know, positive things will come from there.
Yeah, I would concur with that. I mean, it was nice to have an informal get-together. It was not, it was not on the school grounds, and it was to really not rehash the contract or the ins and outs of how that negotiation process went, but sort of how did we feel about the process in general, and what would we like to see perhaps differently? So I think as, you know, it's not, it's not long before the contract ends, so, you know, into, coming into next year, we'll have to start conversations again about what we might want the next round of negotiations to look like, and then we can share with you more sort of what the details are of what we're thinking. Okay? All right. Any other questions for Personnel Committee? If not, then we'll move on to, okay, we don't have policies, so we'll just move on to the next discussion. Yeah.
Do you want to do Audit Committee?
Sure.
We have a verbal report.
Okay.
The Audit Committee met to receive, we have the draft audit, and reviewed the findings, responded with some questions, and we should discuss in a second session what we need of the draft.
Okay. So we'll be doing that later then this evening. We'll move on then to the item under testing concerns, so, which relates to the Curriculum Committee, which did meet today and for quite a while. And so needless to say, there aren't minutes. But, so I'm just going to, you know, everyone got in the ma, in their email or at their place, these documents from Marvin Krebs, which you definitely need glasses to look at, a summary, a chart, which looks at the various assessments that are given at each grade level. And we discuss sort of what some of those assessments are, and then the second document are the details of what those assessments mean. And I know Diane was going to just kind of briefly go through some of the points, but we truly spent two and a half hours discussing really mostly MAPS, the State ELA and Math 3 to 8, and what the column that's called District Developed, which is sort of the equivalent of MAPS for those areas where there is not a test, an already developed test. That's the District Developed are mostly what you've heard of as slows student learning objectives. So that's what District Developed refers to. So when I say that we spent two and a half hours discussing it, we didn't even get through all of that, but really focused on those, those three areas, MAPS, the column that's District Developed, which are student learning objective, outcome assessments, and, and then the State ELA and Math Test grades, 3 to 8. So, you know, I don't know, were you able to come up with some outline, or do you want to just...
I didn't. I didn't spend any time to go over it, but I could summarize.
It's up to you if you want to give it a shot.
Yeah. It's actually, it's very complicated, but I thought I understood, you know, I think I was working a little more confused coming out of the meeting. But as you can see, there's all sorts of tests. And I think the big ones that we think about are the MAPS test, the ones that apply to APPR, and the state test. And the MAPS test can be used in two different ways. They can be used as the locally negotiated 20% of the APPR, in which case the teacher individualizes, they give a MAPS assessment of a student in the beginning of the year, and they set a prediction of how they think a student is going to do by the end of the year, and then they re-give the test, and the teacher gets points for each improvement and each student's improvement. And that's where the MAPS test is used for the local 20% assessment. When the MAPS test is used as a state 20% assessment in a situation where there is not a state test to be used as the state 20%, then the teacher does not get credit the same way. Their tests are, the students may have improved, but if they didn't improve as much as 1,000 other students in the state who have similar backgrounds, similar learning disabilities, similar socioeconomic status, similar mixed days at school, they try and correct for all those, control for all those variables. And so they're graded against how the state feels they should have compared to other students. So even with the same test, they're used in different ways, and they're graded, evaluated different ways. And that idea of controlling for variables within different student populations, the state then places what they call a value added, what they think the teacher added to the value, the teacher's value was in increasing a student's test performance. And there's a lot of controversy about how accurate that finding is, which you can imagine. But statistically, Marvin had pointed out, there's a lot of variable within those cohorts of supposedly controlled students, but it's not really panning out the way it was designed to begin. So there's, it's an incredible amount of work to have rolled out all of these assessments. The teacher is having to predict and write written predictions upon each student's, and you can imagine having to crunch that into one year with a new curriculum in one year, and then have a new state test within one year. It's been a lot of work and stress, and the students have felt it, the teachers have felt it, and I know administrators have felt it. And so we tried to balance the conversation, both with what's good, as we all sort of agree that the intent of the curriculum is good, we want to sort of try to implement other ways being implemented, timeframe, and what's visible most to us from the outside is the assessments and tests are not really being implemented in a way that's anyone's So I think that says something.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, or another summary, I think spoken by our Director of Curriculum and Assessment, is we are now in the test and measurement business. It is occupying an enormous amount of energy. I would have to say that I feel like I'm pretty well, I pretty much understood, partly because I was involved in the contract negotiations over the APPR, which so much of this is connected to, that I felt pretty like up to speed on it. But today, I learned a lot more detail about how much time it occupies, both for Marvin and for our teachers in developing these documents and what they mean. And so, so I would say it was a really good conversation because we all got a lot of And so I would say it was a really good conversation because we all got a lot of knowledge about what this means. And one of the things that I took away from it is that it really, it's impacting a lot of different places in our system. It's impacting the teaching in a classroom, the curriculum, it's impacting teacher time, it's impacting what kind of assessment, it's impacting teacher evaluation. We didn't even get to how it is impacting our finances, the school district. And some of it is, you know, some of, some of the process, it's so complicated, we have positive things that make sense and other things that don't make sense. So one suggestion that came out of this meeting today was that we, you know, there's a lot, again, there's a lot of information just from Marvin on those tests and what they mean for our school district. You know, Meg had previously put together a nice booklet on some articles on, around testing, the testing issues. So one thought was to maybe devote an actual workshop with current and new board members to really spend just on this and so that everyone could hear from Marvin the details because there are so many details that do impact what's going on. I think it's not, it's not overreaching into like what's going on in the classroom that maybe we don't, you know. I think we need to know because the, it was clear for me today that it just, it kind of, as I said, impacts so many different pieces of the system. So that was one thought, was to, was to schedule some kind of workshop to hear from Marvin again and to really review like this document in a way. Does that sort of capture what you were saying?
Yeah, I was also going to say, you know, he did discuss that we don't want to damage the morale in our school. You want to empower your teachers and that, you know, teachers are feeling very burdened by this and insecure. And when we do get our public results, we have to keep in mind that there are design failures in the way the test, the test is designed, excuse me, the test is administered and the scoring procedures. There's huge concerns about that. So when we do get our scores, I think that we all have to relax a little bit and kind of take a step back because we have a great school district. And after leaving the meeting, I was so thankful I was done for the school board. However, no, I have to say, I don't, I hope you don't mind me bringing it up, Paul, but Paul had recommended that we all watch on PBS, the talk from Sir Ken Robinson. Watching that, I just feel like we can handle this. It talks about a great school, and I'm not sure where it was, maybe it was in California, an alternative education program that's designed to get kids back into the school system, and it's basically talking about Rhinebeck. It's very personalized, strong support for your teachers, close-knit community and involvement, a diverse curriculum, and it's a school that engages students outside of their school day. So, I mean, this was really just overwhelming, a curriculum, and I feel really grateful that we have Marvin, but I worry about, you know, in the next couple of years, what it's going to do to our teachers. And I think that we have to watch our criticism, like take a, take a step back and don't look at the results and think our kids aren't learning well or, I mean, this, there's a lot of flaws in this, in the tests and the way they're being evaluated and just kind of put the brakes on it a little bit next year.
Well, and I think you're raising an important point that just to, so we spent a lot of time on MAPS, Diane sort of summarized, and we spent some time on these slows, the student learning objectives, which are linked to that. But the questions, some questions that were raised after the principals made a report on the ELA testing, and I know we all had some concerns about that. And Marvin has some information that we also want to, will share in a more refined form about, you know, one of the questions is how much time now in this implementation of assessments aligned to Common Core standards, is the testing taken versus under old NCLB legislation? And just, you know, we want to get the information more clear, but Marvin's rough estimates were tripling the time for testing for third graders and is it maybe like adding another 90 minutes or so for fourth graders? So the, that information, that data, we want to get to everyone about what the time is. I mean, those were some of the concerns that I interpreted after Brett and John spoke was, was this new or is it not? Is it the same as we've seen, everyone's just more freaked out, or is it actually But those tests are going to come back and they're going to be scored in ways that Marvin said, I think by mid-August, he's expecting the results. And we'll see test scores that are likely to not be, you know, we all think, we know, right? The kid, we're stacking, putting the books back in and a lot of the books from the kids hadn't even been cracked open yet. So the concern is, maybe we'll be proven wrong, that, you know, we need to set expectations as the first year of it, some concerns around how it was administered, and so scores might look differently. I think a conversation or a workshop where people really understand why ahead of that might be a good idea. But that's only if the board is interested in that. Lisa?
I would be interested in that. And one of the questions that I'd want to explore either through that workshop or otherwise is what's the financial impact on the district of the testing that we do and whether those are resources that we have any control over the spending of? Because there are a lot of needs that we have for this district, a lot of things that we'd like to do. To the extent that we feel as a board that the amount of testing we do is not productive, that is an area that repurposing may be a good goal for, assuming that we can do it. That's not something that I really understand at this point, so that's something that I definitely like to address.
Diane?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's definitely something we should all really understand because there's many impacts. And I wonder how much of the additional time and stuff is a one-year issue, like creating a lot of these tests? Is that just going to be this year or every year will they have to be working? You know, there's questions like that, I guess, for me that, you know, maybe it's a lot this year. You know, how much less will it be this year?
Right.
You know, like, will the state fix some of these timing issues? That'd be nice. So it would be good to, you know, get together and get some of this information and, you know, talk about that.
Yeah, so the time, you know, just that question about feedback, since Marvin's the one who relates directly with the state on this issue, I mean, at this time, he's not gotten any requests for feedback. I would say it's fair to characterize his outlook as skeptical about, you know, that throughout this process that's been rolled out really quickly, some very important people in the field of curriculum and assessment have tried to kind of maybe alter how it's going. So, which doesn't mean at all, from my perspective, that we shouldn't try to give some feedback on what our concerns are. It just might, it just, I think it'd be important for us to know, you know, what are the options for giving what kind of feedback because no one's sending Joe and Marvin an email going, hey, guys, how'd that go? What can we do different next time? So my analysis is that's why some school boards are doing these resolutions around high-stakes testing, is because getting some publicity about that is a way to communicate to the state your feelings because maybe sending a letter through an email may not be the most impactful. But that would be something we'd have to consider.
So I think this is a very important topic. I like your suggestion of having a workshop on this. So I think all the board members need to be informed of it because it's going to be an issue that crops up, you know, a lot of ways throughout the school year. And Joe, I want to, you know, thank Marvin for putting all the data together. So two thoughts I'd leave you with. One is I think it's important to separate the concerns on testing from, you know, the administrators and teachers' concerns versus concerns about the student time. And I think Diane's point is right on, which is how much of this is one-year startup till we all get the tests rolling, that the administrators and teachers have to work especially hard versus ongoing. And then when you look at it from a student perspective, you know, when I read this graph and read all of Marvin's descriptions, you know, it looks like that grade 3 through 8 block is taking anywhere from 10 to 12 days of where they're doing testing, whether it's MAPS or New York State ELA or it's slows. 10 to 12 days where they're taking a standardized test that ranges anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes at the low end to a two to three hours at the high end. I mean, that's a lot out of someone's day. And, you know, I think you all know, who have kids, the day they have a test, you know, they're a little bit anxious the night before and they're stressed today and, you know, it's hard to shift gears mentally during the day after you've been in test mode to now it would be in learn mode. So, you know, I looked at it and I said, well, okay, we've got a plan that says we're going to take 10 to 12 days out of 180-day instruction year and put the kids through tests. That's point one. Separate kids and adults and look at the, make sure we look at the kids. The second thing is, you know, when you look at that series of tests, there's the New York State ELA and Math Test, there's the MAPS on ELA and Math, there's Fountas and Pennell, I didn't know what that was, but apparently it's literacy, and there's the curriculum base, so all the other tests that get done, run through the year. You know, I know that some of those are prescribed by the state, some we've negotiated collectively with the Teachers Union as part of the APPR. But it seems like you've got four testing instruments all looking at pretty much the same material. Okay? If there's a way to streamline that such that, you know, you can use one or two tests instead of four tests, I think it would be a good thing. Now, I understand all the constraints. You know, we're testing the students, we're testing the teachers, and we're testing the school. But having four instruments that all cover English seems a little salacious.
One of the things that Marvin has said is that this document isn't, is helpful not just for our purposes here and for him, but that the NWEA, which is the organization that develops the MAPS testing, provides streamlined service where they help you to streamline your testing.
For a price.
Everything's got a price.
That's a good deal. A little complicated.
But that's an important thing to think about. So I appreciate that and it's certainly something that it is. Because, and your point about separating the effect on kids and the effect on teachers and then the effect on, say, like, from the school board perspective, contract negotiations, financial implications are all really important because I did learn things that, you know, we don't have to spend the time today doing about slows that just were, I didn't realize. Like, to me, I thought like, oh, they develop this, you kind of take a test, then you like see how you did on the test later. But the details of that are much greater and much more student-specific. So in terms of, yeah, you know, just one thought is, there is, there is certainly some newness to it as part of it, but every year, the slows have to be student-specific. And then they actually, in your slow, you write how much, how many points you get in your APPR evaluation based on what your students do. So the mathematical construct is a whole nother conversation about going from the kids' test to an outcome, to sending it off, some of them to Pearson, to get them going through some advanced algorithms to come back to you as a 13 out of 20 is a whole nother piece that we sort of touched on today. So just to give you a little preview of the complexity of some of this. Diane?
So I guess I'll leave the conversation with people to think about what they want to do with this information at the workshop. And some things that we sort of came up with are, how do we want to support our parents and teachers and when do we get these test scores back? And one thing that we've already put in the budgets, extra AIS teachers should we need it to provide more support? And how do we want to give feedback to the state on what subjects? Is the length of time, is the implementation time, is the scoring? Is it the cost? Do we as a board want to give that or do we want administration to give that through their own channels? Do we want, you know, it is our obligation when we swear as a trustee to uphold the state education laws and given this test is part of the rules of regulation to state education? Or do we want to discuss the resolutions as other boards have? And one thing that wasn't obvious to me, and I think it should be, it should be clarified to the community, is there is no opt-out of the test option even for the field tests. It's not, it's not an option for us. So, you know, so just thinking about if we're going to have a workshop, what are our goals at the end of the workshop? What do I want to do with that above and beyond just being more informed?
Carol?
I would just hope that the board does decide to do a workshop because I think Marvin does an incredible job explaining all of this information. And I think it'd be really good for the new board members.
Right. So Joe had a thought that perhaps it would be good to do it even after next week when we know and maybe we could coordinate something with the board members instead of waiting till July and August, but seeing if new board members would want to participate. I know.
Yeah, I'm concerned about trying to schedule things during the summer. We know from experience how difficult that is. And I think it's important enough for everybody to hear the same message at the same time. And it is complicated and it's something I wouldn't want to have to put Marvin through doing multiple times. So it would be preferable, I think, if we could get everybody together. And I think the sooner the better. You know, we'll, we'll be gearing up for the first full year cycle of this, for better or for worse, in the, in the coming year. You know, this year, in a lot of ways, was, was a truncated year, especially in terms of the APPR, given the timing of negotiations and state approval, et cetera, et cetera. But we're going to have a full year of this regimen coming up in '13, '14. And also, if we're going to do anything meaningful in terms of responding, as, you know, as Diane just outlined, several options, again, I think the sooner we are able to do that while it's fresh in our minds, the better. I think one of the things that kind of resurfaced this issue for us here was hearing from our principals a meeting or so ago. And I know a lot of you expressed concerns with what you heard and, you know, for good reason. So I would just hate three or four months to go by and we don't wind up not doing this until September or October because we can't get everybody together. And now it's kind of like we're waiting till the next cycle to get fired up again. So I, I think it's helpful to do that while some, at least some members around the table are pretty concerned about what we're hearing. And I think arming ourselves with the information gives you a better perspective to respond to some of the kinds of comments we heard from our administrators a couple of weeks ago. But I'm totally up to you. If you'd like me to try to set something up for, for you and for the newly elected board members, you know, we can start trying to, trying to get a date set for, you know, early June and do it before everybody goes wherever they go for the next couple of months, hopefully nice places. So it's really up to you as to whether you want to try to have a schedule that before the end of the school year or wait until summer or early fall.
I would say, yes, we should go ahead.
Sooner rather than later.
Paul, you're just down.
Yeah, I really would like to have a workshop. I think there's far too much information to digest in, you know, reading the, you know, board committee report or, you know, trying to discuss all these slows and Common Core standards and, you know, APPR and all these kind of things, all, you know, a 15-minute And I'd also like to point out that, I don't know if anybody saw in the headline in the most recent onboard newspaper about when students stress over exams, adults need to look in the mirror. There's, you know, some really good strategies in here about, you know, how to communicate to students about, you know, testing and, you know, how the, instead of saying, you know, if you don't get a one or two on the test, you're going to go to AIS, you say, you know, this test helps us figure out, you know, who might need some extra help. You know, a lot of things like that so that, you know, students don't get stressed out about their performance on the tests.
Yeah. Lisa?
Hey, I hear what you're saying and I agree with you about that, although, as I'm sure most of us know, the kids have their own networks of evaluating the purpose and the merit of these tests and, you know, not that much of what we say about it is going to have an impact on how they view the process. But maybe what we do can have an impact on the process, which would have an impact on that. an impact on the process, which would have an impact on that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing that I feel really strongly about is that I think we have a good history here in Rhinebeck of trying to teach curriculum and let the assessments take care of themselves. Does every teacher get that message? Not necessarily. Does every classroom have that go on? Not necessarily at every time, but I think the message from leadership is always, we teach a curriculum and we try to let the test, you know, what I'd like to see from our collective understanding of all this massive wave going into a headwind, as Marvin said today, that's what you feel like you're doing all the time, is to not have there be negative impacts on the school because there's so much change so fast that what we do well could be diminished from this if we're not really on top of it. And I know Marvin is, I know the teachers are trying very hard, but I think as a board we can help provide that leadership to make sure that things don't come from this by trying to be, you know, act as leaders and be informed and make decisions so that we keep that culture that you're talking about kind of first and foremost. And I want to thank you too, Paul, for sharing that TED lecture, and if anyone hasn't looked at it yet, I would really recommend because it is, it is really inspiring and to the point and very helpful, so thank you. So then we can just ask you, Joe, to sort of work on that kind of plan?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on this at the moment? Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll move on then to our comment section. We have an opportunity for good news. Does anyone want to share good news? Well, I will share that the tennis team made it to the Hall Tournament and they all performed admirably, and I'd like to also point out that our first singles player, Carol Tyson, was the first female to make it to the championship game in 27 years and only the second female to be in the championship. She's been on the boys team, I think, since seventh or eighth grade, but she got a lot of nice press for that, and I think we should be proud of the full team and of Carol in particular, so. I think there's probably other teams doing really successful things, so I think baseball team's going to the Hall also, but just wanted to highlight that. Any other good news? All right, then we move on to old... Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
The middle school had a really nice ball concert last week, maybe, and the staff did a really good job of that.
Great. Very good. We'll move on now to old business. We have some old business. I thought under old business, maybe there were questions raised about attendance and any other issues related to a couple of days of job action on the part of the Teamsters and the bus drivers, so at your place is our attendance numbers? Do you want to...
Yeah, you know, it's a bit of a mixed bag. Interestingly enough, the middle school saw a pretty significant increase in attendance over those two days, but, and the high school, a more modest increase. Certainly the tardies were up, which is understandable given the circumstance, but, and also in terms of program disruption, I'd say, you know, considering we're talking about a two-day window, the disruption was relatively minor. Some issues with Voces transportation the first day, but to be honest, our colleagues just north of the border helped us out. Redhook helped to transport our afternoon. How did that work out? They took two of the runs. They brought our kids back in the midday and brought our kids, our afternoon kids down. At the beginning of the afternoon session, we were able to bus at either end, but, you know, had it not been for their assistance on the second day, you know, our Voces kids would have missed their program two days in a row. So that was, we appreciate their, their helping us out pretty much on the fly. A couple of sports contests had to be canceled, although not most, we managed to secure alternate transportation from other companies that had buses and drivers available, so instead of paying Durham, we paid one of several other companies that helped us out there. So, you know, there was certainly frustration, more so, I think, in the parking lot than in other areas of the operation, understandably. It was frustrating and it was certainly an imposition on parents to have as many of them have to drive as did, but most people were very, very cooperative and understanding.
So the Voces, kids who attend Voces missed one day.
Correct.
Redhook helped with the second day.
Right.
But there's a lot of congestion in the parking lots.
Yeah.
Lots of kids are late to school and perhaps a couple of buses, maybe some safety issues or unfamiliarity with the bus routes.
One that was reported to us of the five or six runs that we ran each day on Thursday afternoon and on Friday.
Yeah, the one person that had trouble on Thursday was asked not to come back and they replaced that person with another person, so.
Yeah, Friday we didn't have any complaints about that aspect of it, but certainly it's not an optimal situation and we're doing all we can as a third party in this to exhort our contractor to get this thing moving along and to sit down and come to an agreement. That's, it takes two parties to come to an agreement, and we're doing our level best on our side of the coin to encourage that they move forward with that and lacking the ability for that to come together, we need to come up with, they need to come up with a better, a better plan if this happens again, to get more of our kids here and to have fewer of our parents have to be inconvenienced with that, so, you know, we'll see. And, you know, the strategy of doing these short job actions, I don't think it's an accident. It's very difficult to bring in the troops when it only lasts one day or two days. So keep working. We're in touch with the company pretty much every day, what's going on, what are you hearing, what's your sense of what's happening? So we're, you know, we're trying to stay on top of it as well as we can, and fortunately, to go back to the topic that was brought up earlier this evening, we have a very efficient system of getting the word out to people, and we've been, we've been shooting updates out at least, at least three times a day during these strike days to let people know what's running, what's not running, what you have to do, what you don't have to do, what you can't do, to keep people informed, and people who talk to me about it have appreciated getting that information on a pretty regular basis, so obviously we have the capacity to do that, we'll continue to do that.
Lisa, and then Paul.
I know that the district's position vis-à-vis the labor issues between the bus company and its employees has been, we are not directly involved in that relationship and so we cannot take a position, we cannot take sides on it, perhaps is a more appropriate way of putting it. But the question does come up since the most directly affected party when there's a job action is the school district and its students, whether there may come a point when we take a stand, not to say we agree with the company or we agree with the employees, not that sort of stand, but, you know, some sort of stand towards both of the parties to that negotiation to encourage them to reach an agreement so that we don't suffer from their endgame. Is that something that we have a taste for discussing, and if so, at what point should we do that?
Well, I'm not sure we haven't been doing it. Certainly we have with Durham. I'm not sure whether, I'm not sure what the other side would respond to, and we can have that discussion, but please don't get the idea that we're sending a message to our contractor that, you know, this is okay, this is not a problem for us, do what you got to do to keep the costs low. I mean, we're not, that's not the song we're singing to them. They know how we're being inconvenienced, they know we don't like it one bit, and they hear that loud and clear from us. That said, we can't go in and say, "You must give them X percent increase," any more than we can go to the Teamsters and say, "You must take X percent offer from the other side." That's where we don't have any standing in that, you know, in that part of the process, but, you know, we're telling the only party we may have an opportunity to influence because we pay them that we're not happy about this at all.
Well, I understand that, but those are, those are private discussions in the sense that they're between administration and the administration of the bus company, and I'm wondering if some more public stand on the part of the district would have any impact on the way those two groups relate to one another. You know, at the moment, it doesn't seem, at least from my perspective, that they think that there's any downside necessarily to their relationship from what they're inflicting on us. Well, maybe we should give them a different message, like, you know, if you persist in not being able to resolve your differences and put, continue to put our students and our parents in this kind of a position with no end in sight, we may consider reevaluating our relationship with this company, which would be bad for the company and its workforce. So, you know, to make of that what you will, not saying to send that message exactly, but I think that we should at least consider whether there should come a point when we do send a message of that sort.
Paul?
Thanks. So I have kind of a two-part comment, good news, bad news kind of comment. I think, you know, really the good news here is, you know, Joe and the administrative team and all the staff have, I think, handled the situation these three days of kind of rolling strikes, unfair labor practice and strikes, very, very well. Communicating to the parents, you know, a lot of different means that we heard tonight, communicating frequently, you know, putting extra staff in the parking lot to handle the traffic. I think that's really the good news here, the way the district has handled it. The data that we see here at our place tonight, you know, the students came to school at the rate they normally come to school, ready to learn, so that's kind of all good. So at a high level, you know, you sit around the table and I think we should feel good about the way the district has handled these three days of strikes, and you look at the data and you say, in aggregate, yeah, pretty good, right? Not a lot of impact on the kids. So the bad news, you know, Lisa wants a statement, I'll give a statement. I want to say shame on the Teamsters local. Think about individual students, and I'd say it's more than an inconvenience, they put the safety of our students in jeopardy. Let me tell you what, the situation that was related to me. You know, we transport students from as far away as the Taconic, on the other side of the Taconic. So the first day of the strike, the first Thursday, there's a young sixth grader standing, waiting for the bus at 10:00 of 7:00 on the other side of the Taconic. Mom and dad have had to leave for work already, grandma's down the road, he's waiting for the bus. The bus never comes because the Teamsters didn't tell the district until 5:00 of 7:00. He gets picked up at 10:00 of 7:00. When the district notified, they notified the parent's house and the parent's email and the parent's cell phones, but guess what? The kid's standing at the bus stop, the bus never comes. Well, finally around 7:20, he starts walking down the road to grandma's house. When he gets to grandma's house, she doesn't know what's going on because she's not one of the emergency contacts. So here we have a sixth grade student walking down the road, wondering what's going on, mom and dad don't know, grandma doesn't know, because the Teamsters couldn't figure out how to communicate in a timely manner. So I say shame on the Teamsters local for putting our students' safety in jeopardy. And if they're going to continue that kind of shenanigans, they will have lost all community support. That's the way I feel, so, there you go.
Anyone else? All right, well, I appreciate you letting us know that you're communicating with Durham. I mean, our contract is with Durham, our contract's not with the Teamsters, so I feel like that's who we should communicate with, you know, if we want to revisit the idea of a more public statement, unless there's some interest in it tonight in having the administration craft something, you know, we could do that sooner rather than later and see. I mean, this could be an ongoing strategy, this sort of on again, off again, which does make it more inconvenient for parents and then the kids. So the kids are coming to school, they're coming later, you know, at chance or not, but, you know, it's a great inconvenience for people. I mean, more than an inconvenience, that's sort of even a light word. If you have work to do, you have to get to work and, you know, where's your kid and how they're getting to school, that's a problem, so if there's interest, we could do something more to communicate to each side or, you know, just have Joe continue to let Durham know that this isn't working for us and they have to resolve this as soon as possible. The rest of the school year goes like this, it's going to be kind of ugly.
I mean, I would say that the bottom line is we need a reliable bus service, whether it's Durham's fault or the Teamsters' fault. It doesn't really matter to me. We have a contract and we need a reliable service, and pitching in to do half of the runs doesn't help the other half of the runs, and, you know, you can't rely on that, you don't know what's going to happen next week, so, you know, if the service continues to be unreliable, I think we need to discuss how to contract. That's what we need is a board of reliable service.
This is for Tom. When is our bus contract with Durham up?
It's a 60-day notice. A number of years ago, when the union first started, it was formed, when we started with, it was A&E when we first started with them, and then Durham brought the company, and even at that point, it was not a union shop. After it became Durham, I want to say about three years ago, they became a union shop at that moment, so, and they went into negotiations, and at that time Durham asked the board if they would give, you know, a couple of years' commitment down the road so that they could do a bargain with them, knowing that we were going to be there with them. So, you know, that was done, we gave them basically a commitment through the end of next year, but we have a clause at 60 days, we have to give them 60 days' notice that we're going to look for another company. So we have a 60-day out clause that, you know, can be used, but then, you know, going out, you know, we have to go through a process to go out and bid and everything. But we had given them that we would be with them through the 13, 14 school year, but, you know, so the way I look at it, we're really tied to them through 13, 14, and then really next, really at any point, we can decide that we want to, you know, end the contract and go out to bid. It's not something you typically would do at, you would want to do it for the beginning of a school year, for a company to pick up in the middle of a school year, it's just, I don't know how that could happen.
Right, and safety is a...
And that's not the guarantee when you go out and go out and do a bid, you can't base it on whether they're a union shop or not, and it's no guarantee that you have a non-union shop that could become a union shop, because what would happen typically in this area is that those bus drivers that are in right now with Durham, if, and this happened the last time when it used to be Laidlaw and then we went to A&E, those bus drivers went from Laidlaw to A&E, and my understanding is it's quite likely possible, even if another bus company would win the bid, okay, those bus drivers more than likely are going to go to that particular one because there's only a certain limited pool of them, is that the Teamsters would follow right along with them, and that if it was a non-union shop, they would try to make a union shop. Whether it happens or not, that's another question, but those drivers that are driving for Ross and for Spackenkill and for Dutch's Voces, not to say that they would, you know, Dutch's Voces and Spackenkill would be looking to leave also, but it would, you know, there's always going to be that possibility that wherever or whatever company we belong to may have a union... company we belong to may have a union, may form a union, and we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a say in that, unfortunately. I can't put a bid out since it has to be a non-union shop.
All right. Well, I guess Diane commented, you know, the point is we want reliable bus service, so.
I agree with that.
Unless, if there's not any appetite, as it were, to do anything very specific tonight, I guess, just, you know, I think there's concern, we've registered our concern and that Durham gets that message and perhaps revisit it at our next meeting to see if the next two weeks have any additional issues.
And, and they knew the board was meeting tonight and that this would be a topic of discussion, so we're, we're glad to send that message
Okay.
Along to them at this point.
All right, great, thank you. Anything else on this topic? Any other old business, anyone else? Diane?
Joe, you were gonna help the cafeteria, the, and we, you were gonna find out if there's definitely a new strategist.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't, I know that was on, that was on the
I didn't remind you.
Yeah, it was on the agenda and I'm not sure what's, what's happening with that now that we've got our internal auditors working on the
Yeah.
Cafeteria.
What had happened, we, we kind of had selected a, a product that we liked, but the price came in quite a bit higher than what was anticipated.
This is a point-of-sale system for cafeteria?
Right, right. And then, what's happened in the past, I'm not going to say six weeks, the, our, our software company that we use for our accounting systems was bought out by another accounting system that's used in New York State, so we currently have Informatic. It was bought out by what's called Harris, I don't remember, it's Harris, they're actually out of, of Canada, but the, the program's called Windcap. And Windcap is very popular in New York State, it would be one of the, if we were to change accounting systems, that would be one that we looked at, the other one being Finance Manager. So, New York State used to have about three companies that used accounting software, it's now down to two. One of the things that we found out about Windcap is they have a point-of-sale system also. We've gotten financial updates to switch to both companies and one's about half the cost of the other one. So, but, the one that we'd be looking at, and we're getting demos here shortly of the program, also has a point-of-sale system attached to it and that's what we want to look at, so they would be integrated into our entire system as opposed to the other system, which was going to be a standalone system. So, we're going to get that, look at that and hopefully, if that's the way we look, we still have that independent system, but we really want to take a look, it's called E-Triton, so we want to take a look at that one and see how that, if it has all the things that we're looking for, best to us to go that, so it's fully integrated. So, but I don't know what date that is for a demo, but we were told if we look at it and we want it, we have it in place by September.
So, we'd still be on track?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Anything else under old business? We have then a second opportunity for public comment, would any members of the public like to comment?
Hello, hello, I'm Deirdre Delver and I just want to speak very, very strongly in favor of the idea of the board meeting in workshop over the summer to deal with the challenges being presented by the new assessments, not only to answer questions that will come to each and every member of this board from parents and members of the community about the Common Core standards and the tests that will accompany them, but to articulate a clear vision of what this board endorses and supports in Common Core curriculum, the move towards these new standards. It seems to me that there is much to celebrate and endorse about the idea of, of these standards, but it has to be articulated clearly and throughout the course of next year, it seems to me. So, going back to the kind of theme of tonight's meeting of communication, it strikes me that if you're going to have more opportunities to meet with members of the community and families, this could be a theme for, for discussion, not only amongst yourselves, coming, coming to a really nuanced understanding of the new standards, but also communicating out and answering questions for members of the district as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Deirdre, those are helpful comments. Great, thank you. So, we move on then to other, some items under other?
Yeah, I have one in your packets under FYI. I put a letter that I received last week from a village resident, Mr. John Wexler, 63 North Parsonage Street. To summarize, basically, he's requesting that we do what, what we can in terms of advocacy to support the, the painting of, of crosswalks on Parsonage Street to enable children to cross those streets more safely on their way to school. As, as you're all aware, we don't have the authority to, to be painting street lines anywhere except on our own campus, but we can certainly take an advocacy position if this board so desires to write letters to our village officials supporting that, to write letters to, he suggests, our contacting Joel Tyner, our county representative, to support that work being done. So, A, I think we, we should respond to the letter writer one way or the other, he's a resident of our school district certainly and if, if the board wants us to, to do what we can to advocate, short of actually sending our guys out there to paint the lines, which we don't have the authority to do, I'm certainly more than glad to do anything that will support the safety of kids walking to, to school. But this is something that probably should come from the board as a body and I'm glad to write a letter on your behalf, should, should you want me to do so. And that decision doesn't have to be made tonight either, I just want to bring the letter to your attention, I want to make sure it doesn't linger too long before we
Right.
Respond some way.
I think, I saw Diane, I was in care.
Joe, is this as simple as maybe a phone call to find out why there's, I mean, there must be some formula as to where they put lines and where they don't, or there's some snut here, some reason, I'm just wondering.
It, it may be and, you know, at this time of year, I'm not looking to take on a, you know, a research project on this, I will do whatever I need to do to get the answers that the board needs before making a, a decision, but I'm, you know, by my way of thinking, where, where crosswalks have been painted and we've done it on our own property and repainted them, you know, increases the visibility of kids crossing and it's, you know, it's not something that, you know, from my perspective, that we have to know whose responsibility it is or who should be doing it or, or even what has to happen to make it do it, so much as advocate with the, with the agency, with the municipalities who have responsibility for the streets and say, "Hey, if there's something that can be done, we support your doing that and we'd urge you to do anything and everything that you can to help our kids get to school more, more safely." I mean, I, I can do more of the research on it if that's what the board wants me to do, but that, that would be not something I'd be able to do this week, that's something that we'd have to do maybe
Yeah, I didn't mean for your research more, just to, to all, and then just resolve the whole.
Yeah, I mean, next time I see my, my colleague Jim Reardon in the bagel shop, I'll ask him what the deal is with this. It'll probably be tomorrow morning, for, for all I know, but, you know, I'd be glad to informally reach out to Jim and say what's going on here and kind of get the skinny from him, but it's, on the face of it, it seems like a reasonable
Right.
Reasonable request.
Karen?
Oh, I was going to say, I appreciate the parent sending this letter because that is, it's where the deli is, correct? And it's where that is
I think so.
One-way street. And people will go by, by my house and go to that, turn on Parsonage so they don't get the blinking light, so the traffic is really heavy on East Market Crossing, left on, to South Parsonage. And I do see kids all the time standing there. And I think, I'm amazed that it's not painted, you know, that they didn't, it wasn't part of their plan, but I would like to see us do something about it, even if, you know, we wrote a letter to the village board itself or offered, I guess we wouldn't have to pay any cost for the village, they're looking to do something through the county.
Sounds to me like the state does the
Well, Market Street's a state, a state road.
Okay, Market's a state road.
So, they're responsible for it.
Okay.
That's why.
But I think that he's got a good point and we have, there's, I think, an increased likelihood of it because you can perceive that the traffic's so much heavier on all those even, you know, compared to Mulberry Street.
Anyone else?
Well, I would support writing a letter, I don't know, I mean, this letter suggests that Joel Tyner is the right person, I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know that either, actually.
Or whether, you know, Jim actually would probably know who the right person to, to contact, so I would be in favor of writing the letter that says that, an additional crosswalk on Market Street.
I know.
I mean, I'd say, why not?
I'd talk to him.
Does anyone oppose doing that?
I'll talk to Jim and then unless he tells me something different or, don't write a letter to the village board, write to the state of New York, you know, I mean, he may redirect me to the, to the appropriate agency or municipality and
Great.
Once I find that out, then I'll do that on your behalf.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Consider it done.
Anything else under other? Okay, then we'll move on to our action item. Does anyone want to remove the item from the consent agenda? Then we have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a grant award from the Ryback Alumni Association in a total amount of $600 to Henry Frisch-Knack for his primary source document collection, mini-grant proposal as stipulated.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? Thank you, a big thank you to the Ryback Alumni Association for that mini-grant for being our history teacher. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of $27,298.91 from the Friends of the Whale Watch for expenses related to fifth-grade Whale Watch field trips to Kate Cott for two classes, Younger, Blast and Stiberson on June 5th through 7th, 2013, and for two classes, Weston and Palmontiere on June 12th through 14th, 2013.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? Again, a big thank you to the many parents and teachers who participate in raising the money every year for those trips, so, thank you. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Jean Borio to score the 2012-13 Grade Four New York State Science Assessments.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant awards to the Community Foundations of Hudson Valley in a total amount of $1,095 to Barbara Rizlo and Kathy Lee for their buddy, buddy, by, budding, buddy biographers grant, say that three times fast, grant proposal as stipulated.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? Again, we're, we're very fortunate, school district, receiving all these grants and other donations, so thank you to the Community Foundation, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff in the 2012-13 school year.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a donation of miscellaneous golf balls, golf bags and golf ball, golf clubs, golf bags and golf balls from Mrs. Dory McKibben to the Ryback High School Athletic Department.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Again, another really great donation to our, our golf team, so thank you to Mrs. McKibben. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the permanent civil service appointment of Terry Sekula as school monitor effective May 26, 2013.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the final reading and adoption of the modifications to Board Policy Number 5305, eligibility for extracurricular activities.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? I'll just say, you know, I appreciate again the work the policy committee has done, I think it's a better policy than it's been, I just would like to think more outside the box, so that, consider that in my vote. All those in favor? That's everyone except me. All those opposed, turns, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of poll inspectors and chairperson as submitted with additions and to give the district clerk permission to fill additional positions if necessary.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Susan Fruzy. And Susan Volin as to provide regents examination preparation for ninth and 10th grade special education students after school for two to three hours per week between May 15th and June 7th, 2013.
So moved.
By Paul, seconded by Mark, discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of confidential student matter and to review a draft audit report.
So moved.
By Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, all those in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session. Thank you.